This is Brett Sinus. I would like to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 6, 2022. And we'll call this meeting to order and we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the execution of the Crockett Road Agreement. I think this is something we've seen and been looking at. I don't know. Dennis, if you're here and would like to give us a rundown?
Dennis will not be here. He is on vacation this week, so I'll just give an overview.
Okay. Well, I mean, she had the agenda. I'll help her get to the agenda.
So this is. Go ahead. So this matter is continuation as far as back earlier in the year, you had the applicant as well as town council and DPW Director talking about what would be necessary in order to allow for septic system to go from left side of Crockett Road across the street to allow for a septic to be developed on the other side of the street. It was identified that not only would there need to be some form of agreement between the town and the property owner, but then also this matter would have to go in front of town meeting for granting of easement to allow for this. So the agreement which was prepared by town council basically identifies where the stipulations as far conditions, the purpose for which the agreement is in place to allow for the owner to construct a septic system that would cross Crockett Road. It identifies that town meeting approval will be required. So it basically sets everyone on notice that we're going to work together to get this done, but ultimately town meeting is the final word for granting that. And we do have, I do have a placeholder on the warrant for that that I'm finalizing with town council. So it would be staff's recommendation that the board execute that agreement.
Okay, this is. Thank you. Twice. Any questions?
I think we discussed this before, but just as a point of clarification, the owners of this particular property own both sides of Crockett Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
So they're simply needing to install across the street the new septic system? Okay, all right. No other questions?
Okay. I will take a motion.
Okay. I move that the board vote to execute the agreement between William and Lauren Montenegro of 105 Crockett Road Upton in the town of Upton to cross Crockett Road to allow for the installation of a Title V compliance septic system and the granting of an easement to cross Crockett Road from the town pending town meeting approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a special municipal employee designation for the Upton Land Stewardship Committee.
So for any of the board members that have gone through and done sort of every two years, you have to do the ethics sort of video and test at the end. And you all may remember that for town employees, you can't hold two different positions. So there is a process around that, and that is designating a position as a special municipal employee. And this issue aroused came to our attention. And we were working to fill the vacancy for the conservation administrator. Former administrator had left. We did have a candidate that was interested in the position who served on the conservation They, that person did rightly contact the state ethics office and got a handle applying for that position. So they not only provided recommendations that then candidate first with also the topic of participation on the land stewardship committee came came up and specifically because of the fact that that is another position in town, but it's unrelated. The state had actually recommended that the town identify and designate all the members of the land stewardship committee as a special municipal employee and that the material of the application you essentially have is a way of then identifying the conservation administrator, Mary Overhold, as being one of those special municipal employees as related to the land stewardship. So it's basically, there's two parts. One, designating the land stewardship committee, and then the second as designated Mary as a special municipal employee. You identify the position, not the person, so that the designation doesn't follow the person around as they're doing different roles in town. It's following the position. So that's why the first step is the land stewardship. So this was basically to sort of button up some things that were associated with Mary coming on board and continuing to have a role on the land stewardship committee. Since that is, while it's somewhat related, because if you just think about land conservation in general, but it is distinct, it doesn't really have anything to do with her position as a conservation.
Okay. Questions?
I don't have any. I think that last statement kind of sums it up. It almost sounds like there may be a conflict there, but I understand what there would not be.
Yes. So I just heard someone chime in speaking. Mary, are you on the meeting?
My question is what does designating, what is the special municipal employee designation? In like, what is that?
So yeah.
The impact of that, sort of what's like the real world, like I get it's an administrative thing, but so it strikes me that we are designating all land stewardship committee positions as a special municipal employee positions to accommodate this one person. And so I'm just, I just want to know what I do again.
So by designating all the members, if any member then chose to be on a different board or actually work for the town, it was, it would allow for that to happen, hold two positions with the town. But because you're identifying the position, the position as a land stewardship committee, if this was a single person in an apartment, like very often towns, and I dealt with this in Littleton, where the Park and Rec Department hired a counselor. That counselor was very often some that worked in the school system. So the counselor positioned itself, not the person, is what was special. Here, it is odd because it's five people or because the committee is five people. But we don't have, say, an individual position outside of member. This wouldn't allow any of the individual members to do anything until they wanted to maybe be on a different board that say received a stipend or be employed with the town in different manner. So that ends up being the purpose for designating the whole committee.
Right. And I understand that, right? Because you have to designate the land stewardship committee positions, all of them as special municipal employees, so that Mary can fall into that category. Disclose that she's doing both of these things, which is her second part. My question is, is there any meaning to what a special municipal employee is? Does that mean they can get benefits? Can they get salary? Or do they cost any money? Do they, like, do we have any unintended consequences here? You know, can someone that's on the land stewardship committee do something that they couldn't do before without disclosing it because these positions are now listed as special municipal employees? Not that they, whatever, that's the plan, and it's China.
No, it doesn't give them any access. It isn't like it elevates their participation to something that then gives them some sort of benefit compared to members of another board that are not designated.
And if one of them wanted to do something that would require them to disclose that membership, the way Mary was, right? Like if this was, if we had done, if we had designated these positions six months ago as special municipal employees, it would have been there. And we were going to hire Mary into this position where she have then needed to still disclose to us that relationship, right?
Yes. Hold on, there's. I just got a message saying that there are people in the virtual, I mean, that are in the waiting room. We just see why it's not going down here.
Just between the board, does it make more sense to list the members individually? Because now the way this is written, that means in perpetuity. Let's just say that the whole board turns over in the next two years. That means in perpetuity, whoever else comes forward onto that board that is already designated a special municipal employee. So is that, are we skipping a step that we really shouldn't be skipping? I mean, it would sound to me like we'd want to maybe list the individual members. But if we do that, do we need individual applications as Mary has submitted?
No, you only when they would have another position, would you then do this application. So Mary has two positions already. So if someone wanted to do something else, that's when it would be the person. I'm just trying to just figure out why. We're only seeing remote hosts, but then when I joined the meeting, I see a whole bunch of other, other people. Hi, everyone who's here for the meeting. I'm just trying to work through how to bring you into the Board of Selectmen meeting. So if you just give me a minute. Hey, Paul, can you hear me? Okay, yeah, I'm seeing you through my computer. I see other people, just they're not showing up on the meeting itself.
If you came out and came back in, is there another link?
Right, but I'm not seeing anyone on the, the meeting. So I'm, I'm seeing more people than what's on that screen. Yeah. Does it say you're in some sort of wait, waiting?
When I looked in, there was a date and I know the people in the room. None of you, none of Dave Ross. And there's nothing going on. Dave thought that it was meeting now. But I could say the link on the agenda posted is dead.
Is there a way to, like, we should either point them to the same, like, right, like, we're obviously clicking on different links.
Yes. So, but I'm trying to identify which one we want to send people to. Yep. So Paul, where did you say you got the agenda from? Yeah, so, so to join the meeting.
Yeah, so people should.
We should log out here.
Cause I just.
Your hearing's been for my.
I know. I, I just went to the meeting using the link on the website, not the one embedded in the agenda. And that's the link that takes us to where everyone else is.
That's exactly what I used to start this meeting.
Any other, so that, that answers my question about the special municipal employees. I mean, I think I'm, I'm fine with this. I understand. It sounds like there's no implication to the other members to have this designation. I don't have any other questions.
The only other question, I guess I would say is if somebody else on the committee then wants to take another position, they would then go forward and fill out the applications.
Yep.
And come before the board again at that point. So we kind of would still have an opportunity to review the fact.
Yes.
Hold two positions in town.
Right. It doesn't automatically grant them the ability to then hold another position without coming back. So since we did have the technical snap, who, I can just briefly just summarize the action we took for the preceding item. So at least people know where we are on the agenda.
Great.
For, for people joining remotely, the first item of the agenda was to consider the the board's execution of a agreement with the property owners off of Crockett Road. With William and Lauren Montenegro of 105 Crockett Road. This is the item that the board had previously discussed in April. And town council prepared an agreement between Montenegro's and the town, which the board voted to execute. The next step in allowing for a septic system to be installed on the opposite side of Crockett Road would be going to town meeting for article and it's right now placeholder is on special town meeting warrant, which that warrant closes on Friday at noon. Do you have any more questions, Steve?
I do not. Okay.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to authorize the town manager to sign disclosure by municipal employee a financial interest in municipal contract as required by General Law Chapter 268A, Section 20B. By designating members of the Upton Land Stewardship Committee as special municipal employees and to allow Mary Overhold, an existing employee to take a second position with the town on the Upton Land Stewardship, Stewardship Committee.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. And next up, we have the grant application for wellness. What's that? You, Sandy?
With the fire department.
Chief Bradley, would you like to speak to this? Yeah, he was on the original call.
So this is an annual grant that Maya, who is the, that's who we have our insurance through our, not only our town insurance, but also our health insurance. And they have a annual wellness grant. In the past, we've received funding for treadmills. That was the last round that the town received and through application submitted by the senior center, Council on Aging. Again, this year, send it out to town departments. Fire department submitted a proposal and the request is for exercise equipment as, as well as then its membership for the use of that equipment. And looking for the board's authorization to submit that grant. One of the questions, the reason why it's on is that I was a little uncertain as far as whether or not, because it was under the $25,000 threshold, whether or not I had the ability to submit grants where there had to come in front of the board. So in some ways, I've been looking for a little bit of a input from, from all of you. And if you say, well, it falls under the Town Manager's Act as far as applying for grant funding, then this is an FYI that we intend to submit for this. So discovering my basis, not knowing which, which way and, you know, just I don't know if, if the previous request actually had come through or not, or whether it was, it was given as an update that we received funding for.
They, they do, actually. I remember all these grant requests always come before the board. This is very similar, actually, to the one that was put before the board about, about a year ago. Yeah, which was the one towards a similar exercise equipment for the new COA and library. So this is pretty familiar, what I'm seeing in front of me, folks at home or folks in attendance. You can see the application. If you're interested, it's on the agenda. It's in the link afterwards, but looks good to me. I'm in favor.
Good to me. I'm in favor for money.
I will take a motion.
All right. I move that the board vote to authorize town mayor to submit the Maya Wellness Grant Application for Fitness Equipment as proposed by the fire department.
Maureen, you want to, I? Oh, second. Sorry.
There we go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous actions. Next up, we have on the agenda, the Lindquist Maloney Land and setting a date for the APR.
So I have this on because when I forwarded off the, at the last meeting, we had approved the reduction from 120 days to 60 days. When I sent it off to the state, they indicated that a hearing date needed to be scheduled. And then when I replied seeking guidance, I got the auto reply saying that they're on vacation until today. We've been playing email tag today and was, was basically have not gotten an answer from them as far as whether or not it's, it's identifying a date to hold it with board, board selectmen, or it's, it's something else. So unfortunately for this meeting, I don't actually have a date. So the only thing I'd sort of say at this point, because it is just scheduling a hearing is to vote to schedule a public hearing and authorize myself and consultation with Department of Labor, I'll turn this date for approximately 60 days out. And then I'll work with them tomorrow or, or Thursday, just to define what that is in the board. What it is, so. All right. So next up, are any questions? Town manager report. We don't have to take any action on this, I presume?
Okay. So no action, we'll just address this at the next meeting?
At that point, I'll probably just look to sort of just let you know when it was, since I'm it's not a meeting with the board of selectmen, so I don't understand why, like, it would be all tied together, but I can provide an update.
When you're saying hearing date, I'm assuming they're going to include the public?
Yes.
In some fashion.
Exactly. Yeah.
So the 60 days doesn't start until the public hearing? When did the 60 days start?
The, that's one of the questions that I have, because in scheduling the timing, you have to be, you know, like, very often when you're putting out some of these hearing notices, you identify that you have so much time in order to provide comment before then holding that public hearing. So the person. Well, that's when you're sort of following typical zoning or other types of public notice that then say 14 days in advance here. Because most likely it gets published in some sort of larger publication that then identifies that timeframe for public comment. That's the one thing that I was not able to get a definitive answer as far as when do we start counting the 60 days? Who holds the public hearing? What is the notice requirement for us? All I got told is you didn't fill in the public hearing date. Like, well, I don't know what date to, to schedule. So so I'll come back to the board with more information on that.
So we can, any other questions?
Nope.
Town manager report, please.
So a big item is really associated with the November 1 special town meeting. The warrant closes at noon on Friday. We have a number of departments that are working on final licensing language to get in for that. What, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, staffing continues to be the primary focus. Next Monday, we have two key staff positions being finally filled and it will be there for first day. Jessica Gomez will be starting on Monday as her pressure collector. And then Amy Bonina will be starting as the land use and special services coordinator. We also are in the process of doing interviews for the principal assessor. We just had one just before the meeting, as well as doing interviews for dispatch and police officer, the police department. We're continuing to work through filling those vacancies. And even next week, we're starting interviews for the assistant town clerk. So a lot of work with the partners and Sandy to line these things up to fill these, these key positions. Today was the special, special, that state primary. So town clerk has been busy, busy with her election workers to make sure that that went off smoothly. Don't have any report back as far as how busy it was, but main thing is, is that they've been doing an excellent job just keeping track of not only all the mail-in votes that have been coming in, but also just making sure that people knew where to vote and did have a few people, not many, about three or four come to town hall looking for voting. We did send them in the right direction. For other things that are, that are going on, you know, we're, DPW is starting to work through finalize the contract documents for paving. At the last meeting, went over roads that were going to be paved. We're in the process of really working with the Council on Aging Director, setting up meetings for a working on ADA grant submission. So met with fire, police chief and, and myself, as well as Janice, to finalize what we're going to be applying for. We're going to be looking for our ADA improvements to our main doors and some of our access points. When we did a, our ADA study, we, it was identified that there was a number of deficiencies with existing doors as far as the weight that was needed to pull open the doors, but then also how fast they close. Some need other improvements. So we're going to be consolidating to submit that application, which is the end of the month. Other things that are, that are going on, you know, we're continuing to work with boards and committees as far as housing production plan met the other week. Working with Paul Delacqua with the EDC, moving through some of their priorities. Paul and I actually have been meeting with consultant for, or sorry, consultant. Our vendor who does our website to get some information as far as the process for updating and bring that up. to get some information as far as the process for updating and bring that up to speed, improving some access issues that are, that are experiencing with the website, but also to achieve some of the EDC's goals as far as having economic development centric page. As far as other things that were mentioned, because of the focus being like so much on staffing, that's where over the last two weeks, we've been having our considerable effort to fill those, those items, those positions.
Questions?
No questions.
Great. Now I would like to open the meeting up to any public comment or input on anything on the agenda tonight. Open it up for any questions. Just let me know your, like Christine?
Hi there. My name is Christine Scott at 16 Christian Hill Road. And I had a question. I don't know how to address this, but more than once I've been trying to pull out my driveway, but people go like 50 miles an hour. So I almost got clipped by two cars. So I'm not sure how I go about getting either a hidden driveway sign or lower the speed limit or something along those lines.
So we do have a street sign request and we've been getting quite a few of these. And one of the things that talked to the police chief is maybe having at one of our upcoming meetings, the discussion. So Christine, feel free to reach out. We do have a street sign request form that you can fill out. But one of the things is, and it's been happening around town, we've found a lot of complaints on school street with speeding, especially since some of the, the work has finally been done, you know, as part of the tip project. And one of the nice, the things about having nice new roads, people tend to go faster. But especially as we're, we're starting to get into the school season, concern about kids at bus stops, kids walking home. We've been getting a lot of complaints for radar signs being, say, installed and other types of ways to slow traffic down. So it's been enough that it definitely will be worth having it as a conversation with work. See if there's some sort of coordination we should have, because the, the police department is pretty active in moving around those mobile speed radar signs, different locations. And they address and help for a short period of time, but then once they're moved away, it seems the behavior comes right back. And then that causes the emails to come into my office saying, can you bring it back? It really helped. So enforcement is an overall concern that we are hearing and the police chief is also receiving emails. And they are, they have stepped up enforcement, but it may be worthwhile of having a broader discussion to identify. You know, do we need some permanently located on some key streets in order to make sure that people are aware of speed limits and to make sure that they drive safely and also to bring more attention to the issue?
Yeah. As, as a general rule, Christine, I would say if you have concerns with people speeding, just call the police department and let them know and they'll share whatever it is they might be able to do to help. They can sort of send extra patrols out there or whatever. If you're interested in a street sign, then go to, go to the website and you can fill out this. Sandy just emailed you the, the form.
Oh, okay. Great. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anytime. Any other questions, comments? Ideas, thoughts?
Quick follow-up for Christine. Later in the agenda, you'll see that somebody, one of your neighbors actually has a street sign request.
Okay.
So I think it's fairly close to you. If you're number 16, I think it's number 39.
Oh.
But we will be addressing it later in the, later on the meeting on a different agenda item. So if you're tuned, then you can see if that may help the situation.
Okay. Thank you.
It makes sense that I think that those little soul power of signs are saying you're going this fast and, and they're red. Fast and then they go green, say great job. Every time I try to find, make sure I get the great job.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Me too?
Yeah. There's just not enough of them around. I, I think those are mostly. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they were grant applications on us.
Any other comments, public input, questions? Any on the phone, last call? We will, what time is it?
Oh, we're, we're ahead of schedule.
All right. So we want to open the first public hearing. Do you want to let me find that?
I think liquor licenses first, December?
Yeah, this is, let me just see what this says. A consumption liquor licenses. Yeah. Yep. So we're going to open up the public hearing. Notices hereby given under chapter 138, section 15A of the Mass General Law that a public hearing will be held Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 at 7:30 PM at the town hall at One Main Street, Upton, Mass. On the application of Aggregate Grill LLC doing business as Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge, 16 Milford Street, Upton, Mass. For an alcohol or in all alcohol beverages license subsection 12 on premises consumption transfer from KC LC Inc., DBA, the Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge, 16 Milford Street, Upton. That's the description of the premises is as follows. Two-story building, first floor cement and wood consisting of six rooms as follows. Lounge consisting of approximately two-thirds floor area with remaining area as a kitchen storage area, women's and men's restroom and boiler room. The second floor is approximately 782 square feet, of which half consists of a lounge and service bar. Remaining floor area consists of women's and men's restroom, office and storage area, outside patio area located on northern and eastern side of the building. So the public hearing is open. With this, do you want to give us any background or setup, Joe, or just hand it over to the applicant or? Okay. Mr. Campbell, I'd invite you to.
The applicants are over here.
Okay. So please just introduce yourself and let us know a little bit about what it is you're, you're doing and make us. If you want to come sit up here, you can. That's a little formal for me. Yeah, there you go. They're more comfortable anyway. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Yukira Masiva.
I'm Ray Braden of Memphis.
Hello.
Married for four years.
Great.
And together eight years.
Fourteen years. Very good. Young girl.
Girl, yes.
Been in the restaurant business for almost my life, 25 years. Yes. So this was another step to the first in my life. So I'll be going to have an own, our family business.
Yeah.
Our family, yes.
Awesome. Good.
Yeah. So we're just following our American dream and, you know, working hard and want to bring some. Good vibes to the towns. Well, want to continue my legacy and you have put in a lot of years in this business. So we definitely want to continue it and, you know, grow the town and this town has been super well. I mean, but we're in that, but so far everyone has been super nice and. So just want to, you know, invest our time and energy into growing something for our little family.
Do you have other restaurants or other businesses that have liquor licenses?
And we're for Sony Mexico, Mexican restaurants.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, three restaurants, beautiful, Benham, Ned.
Yeah. Yeah.
All the bars.
Yeah. Got it.
So the other side, you know, every family is that interest my wife and I, that's a non-party.
Okay. Good. Nice and simple that way, right? Yeah. Good. Great. Okay. Any questions?
You had touched upon it, but I, I didn't understand the answer. In your other enterprises as a restaurateur, have you held a liquor license before?
Before I said, in my name.
Okay. Okay. So this would be the first time.
Do any of the other restaurants serve liquor?
Yeah.
They do. Okay. It's just not. It's sort of under the LLC. Okay. Great. Anything else? Anything else? Go ahead.
Alan Rosellio, 46, Pecan Street. I as a citizen would be in favor of this. I believe that their experience will bring new dining places to the town of Upton. And I think that their experience will help with the board of selectmen's vision is to the town to make more people come into the center of town. So I hope you can vote favor for this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No other questions. I was just going to say, Mr. Campbell's got the bar set awful high, so I'm not sure if they're going to be able to prove upon it.
I think that they're a great family. I think that he has more experience than I had in the restaurant business. And I think they're in the right spot. So I think it's going to be a great fit.
Hi, I'm Alan Orioli, 23 Mountain Street, which is just across street from the bar. My only concern is mine and my wife's is that, is there going to be any sort of change as far as the music that's played on the weekends and the location of where they play it? But sometimes on the weekends, we can hear a little bit of where we are. We don't want anything more invasive than that. We're just a little concerned about that.
Okay. Yeah. We'll maybe talk about that with the entertainment license that's coming right up. And we'll sort of get into the details of that because there's different nuances in there versus just the liquor license. But we'll make sure we address it obviously. Yeah. Yeah.
We definitely have a baby ourselves. So we spent this weekend, Labor Day weekend in Newport, like on Bay Street. So very loud. I was like, oh my gosh.
Good. Good. It's always good to, important to have those community relationships, right? You're not going to come in and have a problem. Good? Okay. Does that help?
Yes.
All right. Great. I will take a motion.
Close this one. It's all on one motion, correct?
You want to separate?
I figured we'd be beyond, like, we'd be late so that opening them all up at once and then discussing it all at once. So I wrote the motion as one, but you could sort of break it out as.
We can.
Oh, you wrote it all as one?
The next one.
Okay. I'm sorry. If, if this is for all alcohol, common, vic and entertainment licenses. Okay.
I can pull it apart if you want to just motion one at a time.
Yeah.
There's kind of a clear break here, I think.
Okay.
Hopefully that makes sense. I move that the select board vote to approve the all, all alcohol beverages license, section 12 on premises transfer from KC LC Inc., DBA Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge. Transferred to and submitted by Aggregate Grill LLC, DBA Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge at 16 Milford Street, Upton. License issuance continue upon satisfactory inspections and submission of all required documents, fees and payments of municipal charges to be reviewed by the town administrator.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous action. We can. So the opening was for all three as well, the legal notice that I read. Okay.
They're all separate. We don't.
They have to close this one.
Right. That was mine. Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing for the transfer of alcohol license for the Rose Garden. We're going to open the public hearing for the common victor license. So give me one second. This is the. Notices hereby given under chapter 138, section 15A of the Mass General Law is that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 at 7:35 PM at the town hall, One Main Street, Upton, Mass. On the application of Aggregate Grill LLC, DBA Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge, 16 Milford Street, Upton, Mass for a common victor's license to cook, prepare and serve food. Okay. So this is the food handling portion of the license. Any comments about that? So you're going to maintain a consistent, you know, obviously I'm sure you'll change or update the menu, but no real changes to how that food's being prepared, the hours of service. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Great.
I'm not sure it would be applicable. I assume hours of operation, all of those type things would stay the same?
Okay.
I think my people's on Tuesdays, right? So we plan to. Oh, Monday, sorry. We plan to say Mondays as well.
Okay. I'm not sure if on the liquor license, that's something that may have to be addressed if it shows.
I did see that currently our license does not have any days specified. It does have certain hours. Monday is one of those days that.
Yes, it's included. Yeah. That's included. Okay. So we're good there.
I think all of it has changed a lot of things around. So we're just trying to bring it back to normal. Maybe it is possible, but I find it is possible.
Yes. Okay. Yes, I am. Take a motion.
Yeah. I move that the select board vote to approve the commandicular's license to cook, prepare and serve food. Transferred to and submitted by Aggregate Grill LLC, DBA Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge at 16 Milford Street, Upton. License issuance continue on satisfactory inspections and submission of all required documents, fees and payments of municipal charges to be reviewed by the town manager.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries by unanimous action. I will close the public hearing for the common victor license. And we will open the public hearing for the entertainment license for the Rose Garden. And this is. This one notices hereby given under chapter 138, section 15A of the Mass General Law is that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 at 7:40 PM at the town hall, One Main Street, Upton, Mass. On the application of Aggregate Grill LLC, DBA Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge, 16 Milford Street, Upton, Mass for entertainment license to exclude Sundays. So I think this gets to some of the questions that, that folks had. There won't be any changes that I'm aware of to this license based on what we have, what it is today, right? So there's no changes in time or anything like that. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And so just so that you folks are aware, so what, what governs? So the, the entertainment license governs like the hours of operation, but when they can be providing entertainment. The level of that noise is actually, I think, a zoning bylaw that has to do with the number of decibels that are allowed. And so it's a sort of very technical definition of the volume that, volume of noise that can be made in any particular zone. So that's sort of there as like a backstop if things really became difficult. I'm very confident that it would never come to that, because I'm sure if you say, hey, this is getting really loud and it's a problem, that you can figure something out. That's, that's workable for everybody. Yeah. Yeah. So reasonable people can point to reasonable solutions. So, and we're always here to help. There's anything that we can do that for you or for you. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the entertainment? No.
And I think typically just to follow up one more item, I think to follow up. As far as I can always remember, the entertainment at the Rose Garden has always been indoors. So it's only been recent that we've had some requests for outdoor entertainment. Myself personally, I'm not a fan of the outdoor entertainment. I think there's too many houses around. That's what, in this community, I think indoors really where that belongs. How that will play out in the future, you know, can't wait to tell.
In the current license does no outdoor music will be conducted after 9:00. In the current license does, no outdoor music will be conducted after nine thirty P M.
That's what it currently says. So no outdoor after nine thirty P M is what the current entertainment license has in it.
After nine thirty.
After nine thirty. Yep.
So I guess there's a question there. When we transfer, do we wanna keep that time there the same or do we wanna modify that in any way?
I think we would keep it the same. I don't know. There's never been any.
Yeah, yeah. That's fine. It's just over the years, especially in the summer, what I found is the doors start opening up. And when the door is open, then comes, I feel outside entertainment.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But that's just.
Right, right. If the door opens and the sound carries, then it might not technically be outside, but it's carrying it as though it works. Okay? Yeah.
Now it mentions a pool table in the license, but not in the application. I'm not sure if that matters, but are you applying for the pool table as well?
Bill's like.
No.
I don't have any other questions.
All said.
Not at all, right?
I think so. Good job. All right.
So far.
All right, I will take a motion, please.
I move that the select board vote to approve the outdoor entertainment license submitted by Aggregate Grill LLC, D B A Rose Garden Restaurant and Lounge at sixteen Milford Street, Upton. License issuance contingent on satisfactory inspections and submission of all required documents, fees and payments of municipal charges to be reviewed by the town manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries by unanimous action. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Mike? What can we say? Thank you for all your years and years of service to this community, obviously. No, I, I, I know, I know. I don't want, we won't get all teary-eyed here, but just, the kids are gonna miss the tricks. So you'll have to come to the new restaurant. All right, I guess I have, we'll have to have a beer and do some studying together. Awesome.
It's the same, it'll be the same, I'm sure. A melting pot. It's a nice little neighborhood. That was the goal, and I think we were pretty successful. Fifty percent food had been well. That was.
It's been a, a great part of the community and so many great memories for a lot of people and families going in there and having pizza with the kids and having the kids run around upstairs. It's always a, it's nice. Continue that patronage and wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us know if you ever need anything. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will close the public hearing for the entertainment license. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Very good. Good luck. Nice to meet you both.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the discussion on the town center development request with economic development committee. This says that we're, it's a joint meeting, so I don't know, do you need to open a meeting or, I didn't know. Okay.
Board of Health, let's open. Oh, no, actually.
This is just the economic development committee. Nope, this is gonna be the economic development committee. Perfect. We know what people are most interested in. Restaurants, food, entertainment, beer. Redevelopment, downtown redevelopment, exactly. Welcome.
I'm Ross Jerry E T C. Joined by my support team, who are right in time. So all, I understand a couple members need to see. So I'm speaking on behalf of everybody. There are just three items we wanna discuss tonight. So one is the current state of the downtown organization, specifically the R F P for the town and private. Three. Just to give you an update on the Warren Street Parkland design that's going, because we started the process with the design there, the state grant we received. Then we've completed on the facade improvement program, which is going to be going live. The day after. So I know this program funded with state grant. So mind, we'll start with the R F P for downtown. So I know we're all aware, but just so everybody's up to speed. It got commissioned in twenty nineteen to sell the, sell these or transfer my shows, sell one of these at the line. We went to the market. And it was strategy information, I guess, just before the pandemic. It's an R F P, a request proposal for developers to acquire the town own parcels and private property parcels, that plot right to town. Not exactly the best timing. We had over three dozen individuals and firms register for the R F P and pulled that off the town website. We had no response as our due date was early April twenty twenty, which is the middle of August. When we went through the local rapid response program and car strategies, one of the things that we focused on was how that we improve upon R F P. And we were told that the R F P that was written by a citizens committee, what's not with the town experience, was a little too deep. There was a little too much history in there. We want people to get excited about the future, want to respect the history downtown. But we had about six pages on the history machine got to. It's a little bit of a disuser. Also, our grading criteria was broken out, separate, different categories. So was there a way to simplify the history, get some more excitement, potentially listen to photos, the activity downtown, people relate well in photos, and condense and simplify the grading criteria? So the E T C now has gone through the document. We have taken a draft out to some of the contacts, all the developer paths, the mass development, C M R B C, folks that look at these type of R F Ps on a much more regular basis to get their feedback. A lot of feedback we received from them were small letters. Most of them said, you guys are on the right track. It's good. This is an interesting opportunity. How often do you get a chance to make a major impact? We went down that. Most of those have been developed for three hundred years now. So have a chance to kind of come down there and re-envision that. It's an exciting opportunity to be doing. So to get into the document that is in front of you, that was sent around previously, this is a current draft, which we have, that's not on from legal counsel yet. So that, after tonight, the board is, we would be volunteer. We will have a legal counsel. That would make sure all of our teeth are crossed and I forgot it. The, there are five parcels to question in this lot. The best way to look at it is that lot is grocery, around the corner on Milford Street, it's center of the back. Those five parcel. A little back in here. H nine. Show what it is. Makes up, just under a total of one and a half acres. And then is the former G A R lot, which we split out at the main town meeting, horrible angels lot, the former East Wing, which is now the Baytown Park lot, the full gravel lot, which we purchased two years ago. Those four are town owned. And then right in the middle is the archaic building, which privately owned by Mr. Thompson. As you may recall, in this board, they come back here, on the entrance or transferable P M S, Mr. Thompson, he shot the ice sub of the archaic building. So that we're able to go out to market, tell anybody who may be potentially responding to this R F P, this, they don't have to guess. There's not a bidding or there's not a, where this successful respondent, and we have to agree with Mr. Thompson's price should be. I spoke with Mr. Thompson last week to find out whether his latest number was up. As you can see, that number has changed, where it was in twenty twenty. She comes to me and informed me that the previous number was of eight twenty seventeen. And then holding that for a while, and party conditions have changed, and you guys see the number. So there's two questions to be answered here. The first is, is this board willing to look at doing a transferable P M S once again? Which is, we're walking in the price with the idea that we can transfer that purchase sale that this respondent. If we do not have, if that's what respondent, that purchase sale was by a respondent. So the town is not committed to purchase that at that price. They'll just try and apply cost restraint. And if they are willing to do that, we can. I'm not sure the whole government is telling. Okay, so the price to the property. So Mr. Thompson, that's what is going to be higher for. To property, an offer, who wants. It is crucial to be, um, the downtown, since it's really, probably right, but that's one item for us to discuss. The other item to discuss is the timing. So right now, working backwards from being able to have something that the committee can look at before that end of year, we're thinking that we would want to receive proposals in just before Thanksgiving, Friday before Thanksgiving, she knows it's over eighteen. So the hope would be to try to issue this later this month, giving potential respondents, where it'd be forty-five days. To review and put together the proposals. Because the proposal we're asking for, which you can look for in the document, one page or back. Looking for conceptual drawing to pretend you're conceptual, you know, to show that the project is feasible. There's other information about the firm. How they have been on this before. They have the references and compares. Because we want to let somebody know that he's bringing forward the town's vision, but ask the history and capability. Because I could draw a wonderful drawing, but myself personally would not.
But what role do we play in helping to facilitate sort of what that, right, vision would be? We've obviously got an incredible opportunity here. Obviously, the private landowner has to be sort of brought into the negotiation somehow. It's an incredible opportunity. The town's invested in it. Is there any other role that we can play to bring developers here to have a public or open conversation to say, you know, hey, who's got ideas and try to work with somebody? Are we hampered by this very formal sort of R F P response process as opposed to bringing in a handful of developers and saying, all right, we're gonna have a workshop and discuss this, or sort of roll up our sleeves and let's figure, look at some numbers, let's figure out different things with Mr. Thompson there with, and just try to like work it out, or is that not how government works? So that's a question for Joe, but it, it seems like there's a lot of like, I don't know, it just seems like there's a better way to do this.
I, I think, this is what we heard last time.
Living with.
R P, there was confusion, trying to pull out, right, the beginning number where it says the town is looking for development proposals, I'm gonna be all good, man, and you, it's you, it's you spell, right? We had a number of developers pull it, thought it was like us building a community center. Where we had an idea, they were gonna come in and build it and for us. We don't wanna be my words.
Well, right, so I mean, it just, we need that, right, we need to be clear that that's not what it is, so.
We tried to put that in front. We're also going to conduct a site visit about three weeks in. So I think I should have it printed in print dates. I've spent so much time in this document.
Right, it's like, the end of the day, what we're trying to do is we're trying to sell a bunch of property to a developer that will develop.
Correct.
And we wanna have some say in how it gets developed because it's in the center of town.
Yes, so the.
That's what the R F P should say.
The R F P.
Sorry.
The R F P word. If you want to see your successful plan and what's going to financially work for you, then the E T C will review all those respondents, right? This one matches the vision. It's gonna be successful for you, but it's also what the town wants. And then we'll bring that successful respondent forward. And then the scoring system, when we receive in the responses from central developers, adheres to the town center vision and overall development concept and schedule is forty percent. So it's the majority of the score is presenting proposal that adheres to the broad vision, which also had, it had clear points which were about, I mean, there's no, you know, you know, basement floor, there needs to be a response, some ways to have a shot, you can't, you don't know what's going to work. So we have to put kind of that broad framework. It needs to be pedestrian friendly, needs to fit in the historical feel of downtown. There needs to be a affordability aspect to it. It has to be mixed use. It can't be all residential, it can't be.
Sure.
There's a strong preference to stay in the aspects of the church, or maybe just the exterior show, the church is safe, it's more of it. All of these pieces are outlined in the vision, but like you could leave the church.
Right, and what is, and what is it about the church, right? Because the church is a gutted disaster and has virtually, it probably has less than zero value. It's a liability at this point for someone to own it. The original steeple was knocked off in a hurricane, so what's on there is a stub of its former self. Maybe what could be done with that is that we would work with the developer to design and architect something that has the aesthetic of what that looks like from a community perspective and an old New England village perspective, and put a structure up that has a steeple that was like the original steeple that was on the church, so it looks better than what's there. So I think it's a question of like, what do people value, right? And I think certainly there's a contingent of people that value the building because of some nostalgic reason that's very personal and near and dear to their hearts and their family and their religion. And I totally get that. But the reality is, it's a nearly impossible piece of wood to work with, right? So what is it we really wanna get after as a community? And my guess is that we'd have a lot more support across the entire community, not just a specific small group of people that are very interested in that building itself. We could get a lot of support to say, hey, we have to let this building go, but what's gonna come in its place is gonna look better and more like the original steeple than, than what was there now. So, you know, but those are the kinds of conversations, like, how do you do that with this?
I can just throw a quick, back and forth. Let me just throw in the other side of the idea. There's a, there's a large contingency out there that thinks, you know, old buildings have certain charm. As we stand in this meeting room, could never replicate this. As unusual as it may be, and we hear about a coup stakes, we hear about a lot of different things, you can never build a building quite like this. So when you look at that old church at various locations all across New England, those are taverns. They kind of get rebuilt as taverns. So yes, it's a rough, I'm gonna call it a block of wood, a raw block of wood, not a bad block, just a raw block. So would that be the best usage of that building? You know, it's dated here as eighteen forty-eight. You always look at it as the town of Upton, we have thousands and thousands of acres of open space, lots of money in the bank here. However, we have no, I shouldn't say no, very, very little historical perspective. So you take a town like Upton, and you say, what do we actually own for historic buildings? We're sitting in it. And this other, you know, ancient, so, you know, it's, it's a tough, you know, it's a tough decision to make. But I think overwhelmingly, I think most people in town like to see that building, certainly.
And I think that's what, that's what the workshop was, right? Like, that's why we did that, was to, you know, have those conversations. You know, have those conversations, and that's why that RFP is written the way it is to reflect what that workshop wanted.
The last section of the scoring, so not only do you get forty, up to forty points for adhering to the vision. Preservation, adaptive reuse of the church, either its entirety or elements of the building, can be up to other fifteen points.
Right.
The whole, certainly percent of it is adhering to this vision and calling it a church, but we understand, we, we, we know we can't say you have to see.
Right.
We're very hopeful that somebody can find a way to. Incorporate it, improve it better, like. You know, feasibility, it's small.
And 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 at what cost, right? Do do we as the town wanna own that piece of real estate in those vacant parking lots? Until it becomes profitable enough for someone to renovate that church building, even if it takes twenty years? Or do we wanna, right, so it's like there's the nostalgia of holding on to the building from a historic perspective, totally get it, maybe that makes sense. But then there's also the cost of sitting on it and having it just fall to the ground, right, which is what's currently happening, like, it's not getting any closer to being saved by rock.
They say times of, yes, certainly, when the building goes through, it's gonna experience some form of deterioration.
You know, so there's a, there's a lot to consider, but again, it's that dialogue with potential developers to say, like. Hey, there's a scoring system, we've got this, you know what people want, but. Let's look at the numbers, let's figure it out, how can we make it work? You know, what are the challenges, right?
And we're hoping that.
I think it's as black and as simple, I don't have.
We wanna schedule a site visit, and I tend to, Thursday, October thirteen, to be. Out three weeks and having a vision, aren't we? It is to try to get folks out here and have those conversations, we can walk into church, right, and like, I think it's a lot. Impressive, and if you, you can go and look around, feel the history. Go down there and stand the different parts of the land, see potentially eligible, it is, you know, land flows. Right now, there's zoning for the Upton Center Business Church, allows for three and a half stories on the road. But based on the slope of that land, you may be able to use a basement back. Four story, so be able to show these things that you can necessarily see and understand, like, the potential.
Yeah, it's too dimensional.
All the things to do here, yeah. Now, and if Center Brook is. Maximized to its potential, its possibilities, to, you know, have some type of gatorade drinking establishment back there. Okay. There's a lot of ideas we have that we don't know if useful or not. And that's kind of why it's a request for proposals for developers to tell us. We can do this, we can make money.
And who, who drives those conversations with the proposal? So we'll get the proposals back. Obviously, the EDC looks at them. Who, what's the process to engage those potential respondents and developers to say? All right, hey, I'm Dave, the chair of the EDC, let's talk about this, we know what's on paper, we have to have a conversation, let's. What are your, like, engage in a dialogue, is that Paul, is it you, is it the town?
No, well, we're gonna do, so first of all, when we issue the RFP, if a question arises from somebody who's registered to the RFP.
Yep.
That will be sent in the hall. And the reason we want folks to register for the RFP online, yeah, that must just send it in the press. Is that question that comes in, we cannot respond just at that moment. We have to, we send that response up to everybody. So even if you didn't think of it, that way everybody's getting the same information.
Yeah.
Once those. Responses all come in, yeah, it's before Thanksgiving, stick to the side of it, yeah, the EDC will then go through them, score them based on the criteria that's been laid out, right? Let's say hypothetically, yes, this year, we've got ten responses, yeah, we will score them. And then we have said, the top three to five response will spend my next. Let's see, we'll interview you. So we'll get ten responses in, somebody's gonna tear the whole thing down. And I'm just. But we get three firms that all have different ideas, but it's respecting the number of each of them, one. We will, the EDC will have them come in, since it's EDC. But the EDC will interview each of them, and we can have more of that dialogue. They'll make a presentation for ten to fifteen minutes, we'll ask them to hit on certain things. Definitely proposal, and we gotta have that. And then from that, we will forward. Slack, and this is our recommendation, the EDC can't enter agreement. And then that's the agreement you're entering into with these folks is to sell these or transfer the land. But we're only gonna do that. If we know they're going to build what we want.
Well, yeah.
It would also be interesting if someone were interested in buying only a portion of. I understand, according to the rating system, of course, it would be declined. But just curious, out there, whoever comes forward with different proposals, is there anybody out there that's interested in just a portion of? The property that the municipality owns?
I, I think we'll look at everything, so if somebody came in with a high value offer just of the church. And it could work, then, you know, we would look at it. Is that the best possible use to then? Now, we're pretty upset now. Versus if there's another proposal which has all parcels.
Right, right, because I think this will also be an opportunity to see if it's a time. Maybe to break it apart, you know, we've done our best to put it together.
It's not feasible.
There's no desire there, maybe it's best to take it apart, and you certainly see in other towns where the veal buildings, I've seen some that look pretty dilapidated. And they.
They invaded that church in Westminster.
I don't know what they did on the inside, but they don't.
Yeah, there's a couple of them in Milford that have been done over there.
You know.
Yeah, the only, just like from a language perspective, and it's, and it's a little bit of, uh. Semantics, linguistics, whatever, right, like, we want to partner with somebody that's gonna do something here that. That they want and wants, right, like, you can't pick the person that's gonna build what we want, right, like, that's just not the mindset that. Any developer would wanna have coming in, like, oh, we're gonna go build what Upton wants, we want them to build what they want. But we also want what they want to be close enough to what we want, that we support it and people get enthused about it and get community support. And, right, we're gonna have to go to town meetings, we're gonna have to sell these things, we're gonna have to, you know. Do a lot to make this happen, and I think we've done a lot of that with the way that we've. Positioned ourselves to be able to sell these parcels. But it needs to be something that everybody's excited about, and I don't think there's any developer out there that's just gonna come and say, all right, tell us what you want, you know, give us your specs and we'll build it, like, that's. You know, they've gotta figure out the numbers, they've gotta figure out the capacity, the floor, I mean, everything, so.
Well, that's why.
And I know it's a little thing, but it's just like that sort of sense of what we want from someone is something that they're passionate and excited to be a part of.
I mean, the way I describe this project is three and a half street. The first floor is we don't. It's either office space or we don't. Not any factory anymore, it's restaurant. And then the second, third floors are residential units, they could be condos, they could be apartments. That's half floor is where I like to see all the cannibals. So that we don't have them down on the ground. And then there's the potential that there's a full basement with additional retail or office space that walks out back. Is it one big building that wraps the whole way around? Maybe if you think about it, that's not gonna necessarily match the history of downtown, it's supposed to be. Right, so maybe it's one building, but if they, developers have a way to break it up, so it looks like it's actually different ones, but. Yeah, we, we're not putting anywhere in here, like, it needs to be fifteen residential units, they have to be split this way.
Are there other, do you, do you have other sort of? Questions, comments, generally, Maureen or Steve, and that, because I think I know specifically you wanna talk about the timing and. That is the, are we interested as a board in doing the transferable PNS again? So I don't know. You have particular questions or thoughts before we talk about the transferable PNS we can do first and then. Yeah.
I think it all ties together because the money part of the PNS is really gonna be, for me, that's a, a big problem, I mean, based on the rough draft that we have, and then based on the most recent update that you submitted for us. Uh, you know, it's a fifty percent bump in, in the asking price, so. You know, to me, I, I kinda lose some interest in going into a PNS at that number. However, understanding that it's time sensitive and. You know, how do you put forward a PNS without a known commodity of what the land acquisition cost is, I'm not sure if there's an option to do that without the town getting.
I mean, we can, we can, uh. Just state in there that we know the owner of the property is interested in something. That's that, you know. We've been told more things we can do to make it easier for developers, we don't have to cheat down. What is this number, or, well, it only works if I get it, but this, you know.
Right, you don't want the respondents to have to call George Thompson and introduce themselves and say, hey, how much can I get this land for, it's appraised at this, my market of value is that, like. It, it's, it just reduces their complexity significantly, we can put something in there, and if that number is what becomes the problem, right, if. We, there's things that we can do to change the financials of this, right, because we have the assets, we have the land, we have the church, we have the space. So we have value that we can put into. A deal with a developer and we have value that we're expecting. From a developer, right, like, we want it to be a certain thing, we wanna work with you to make it fantastic, we want it to support what the vision was, that's why we created the committee. But if we need to make the numbers work and it comes down to the numbers. That's fine, but I think the number has to be in there, whatever it is, obviously, the lower the better. Right, but it's not our number, it's not our PNS, all it is for us is certainty for someone that's gonna try to develop the land.
Yeah, I think it does.
I think it has, I think we have to have the transferable PNS in there.
You know, this is a process that blocks. We're on live tickets for the six months. Maybe they want, what it blocks is, was if we don't do that. Somebody could call Mr. Thompson, the bottom of the wall, out of water, the number, and then the property right in the middle of the shop. It kind of took me as a new guy else. And Mr. Thompson wants to work with the town, he wants to do the right things. They're holding on to that property.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
But he's also been waiting a long time.
What's the price up? I mean, there's no talking there, the state owns that little roadway.
When I talked to Mr. Thompson, I reminded him of the price that we had in twenty, yeah, six years ago, that was actually six years ago. That's the number you can hold me at.
Yeah, I mean.
It certainly isn't six years, I mean, that, that may be what you're getting through the grapevine, but it definitely isn't six years.
And again, like, it is what it is, right? He's got it, so whatever the number is, yeah, we should say, if you wanna, I mean, right, it's, it's. We don't have any leverage to negotiate the number, that might have led to say.
I think he's willing to.
Instead of this gift to the town, the more of a gift you give to the town, the better off the town is, so what do you want your legacy to be, to Thompson?
I mean, I would just, I, I would just say that, uh. It would be in the board's best interest to have Joseph contact him. Uh, you know, he's our chairman officer, he really should get involved in that discussion. You know, more so than any of us, and make sure that. It doesn't change day to day or week to week, and, and again, I think Maureen's question is, great question is. You can say it's, or he could say it's five or six years ago was that price, but still, we're talking about fifty percent increases.
What is the assessed value to what he's asking?
Uh, yeah, and, and, right, and we don't, and we don't need to negotiate, like, like, the point is, he's gonna have a number, we should try to. Share him the best, to the best of our ability, what we think the number is and why, and. It is what it is, right, where he, it doesn't matter if it was twenty years ago, and he decides he wants to double it up. Okay, so we agree that we want to have a transferable PNS in RFP.
At six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It doesn't mean, uh, so. I don't think, for me, it's not about, because we're not negotiating a number, so we can sit here and say no to six, I think you're asking about the idea of having the transferable PNS.
I, I think.
But go ahead.
Oh, is it the numbers come after?
Okay. Uh, what I was gonna say is I'm not comfortable just blanket statement saying I endorse that, I'd like to, again, have Joseph talk. To the owner, make sure that's the solid number. You know, is there any other dollars involved? Uh, sometimes when you tie up a piece of property for three months or six months, they're looking for a deposit that's non-refundable. So if we're gonna lose our gamble. Dollars tying up the property under a PNS, a transferable PNS, I'd like to know all the figures. You know, what is the actual purchase price, you know, on what timetable? And what is it that we're putting, you know, up for escrow money?
Mr. Thompson told me he does not want any of the town's money, that, uh, he repeatedly stated is fourteen. Because I guess last time we did five hundred dollars or something.
I think it was a hundred.
A hundred.
We made it.
Yes, he made a point of, like, I don't want that, but maybe under NGL, we have to.
We made it.
Okay, so we want a PNS, we just wanna know what the number is before we say we wanna get it. Cause I, like, what, can you just clarify your question for us right now so that we can give you a very clear answer?
I feel like, I mean, there's a question, is, is the board. Comfortable with pursuing the transferable PNS? And it sounds like.
It's a yes for me.
Yes, and then, but we have to negotiate first, or check on.
So the price is three hundred and ninety five thousand.
Okay, so you, you, you're, you understand the difference in the question, so yes, we want included.
I do want, I like the concept, I do.
Because if the board is not gonna pursue the concept, then there's no reason to engage.
To figure out the number, exactly.
Right.
So I think we should engage him and figure out the number, because I think ideally we would include a transferable PNS in the RFP. Because it's gonna make it much more likely that we can have some response from people. With some certainty that when they run their Excel spreadsheet, they're gonna wanna have a number.
You know, and, and let me make it clear, I understand where that discrepancy comes from. It's a workable, usable, livable piece of property now, and for the purposes of what we're looking to do, someone is gonna acquire it and knock it out. So I can understand there's gonna be a variation in value there. But I, again, I can't just blanket.
Every time we have a schedule, we're saying.
Yes. But again, I can't just blanket say yes. To, I'd like to see, see it in paper, you know, black and white, make sure that I understand what exactly we are, you know, for what period of time, what, that's honestly, the asking price, I'm a no. Basically, however.
But you understand the implications.
I understand the implications.
That makes this very unlikely that we're gonna redevelop this at all.
I think that prices the whole project out, to be quite honest with you, I think it's a move one.
But you'd be decided, I mean, you don't, right, but you're making that decision for a developer as opposed to saying, all right, six fifty is the number, I don't like it, it's way too high. Let a developer come and say, if you got this number down to three, we would do it, and then we can go back to Mr. Thompson, we could say, hey, if you wanna. Get out of this PNS and you wanna go to him directly.
Yeah, but I mean, the developer can deal directly with Mr. Thompson.
I think one of the things is when you're looking at, and exactly, they're, they're pulling out their Excel spreadsheet, they're pulling out their pro forma. They have a development plan that will cost X dollars, they have site development cost that will be X, that will leave what acquisition is. What realistically would mean is that the town could be subsidizing. Mr. Thompson, because we just won't get that much, so if site acquisition is eight hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty is going towards Mr. Thompson. That ends up being. What would probably make the project feasible. That's the sort of, the skin in the game that the town has is basically that in the form of, of allowing for the development. Um, and sometimes that's. You know, um, an active decision that it's not the immediate project rate, um, return on investment, it's the long term, what is the increase in property value, what's the increase in revenue and. You know, do we make that up in ten years?
Because right now, those five parcels, if we get one parcel, it's probably going to four hundred thousand. We're holding it whatever amount goes into the guy significantly. There may be upfront cash, it's less than. Long-term cash.
Yeah, okay, so I think we have what we need on that one. The timing, obviously, we can't discuss the timing much because we need to have the PNS numbers.
So.
We can make a decision on the PNS number.
Well, what we can do is we can write in the RFP, the town is currently receiving. That's for the PNS. At this number, so, yeah, we'll need the number, but we don't necessarily have to have it signed. So if we're still going through, his lawyer's looking at it, you know.
What period of time are you looking to have the RFP open? Was it six weeks?
I was thinking to release it September twenty sixth, and then do November eighteen, that's six or seven.
As you mentioned before, before, thanks.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, it would maybe. Yeah, I'd say, I mean, we'd make it November thirtieth.
Yeah. Get true. Do you have another meeting between now and then and we have some other.
I mean, is the board comfortable with going up? Also, this market is calm, it's changing. Month to month, we could say, you know, it's the right time, wait till the spring. I don't know what six months is going to look like.
Enterprise material, delivery dates and all of that. Times not on your side.
The gentleman want to make comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to state, I reckon again, that one thing I agree with the chairman is common to get my take on it is that the town shouldn't necessarily be in the business of holding on to property, especially something like that. Something that Chairman Brett said that going into the future, this is lost tax revenue. And it's been for many years, talking recently with a recent board selection person. This town's invested almost a half million dollars in their vision in the acquisition and having experts such make presentations to the town. Reality is that the market is probably going to dictate what can be built there profitable for a developer. The town has already tried to direct, you know, ideally what they would like. But I hope whatever amount you're going to suggest for the RP or whatever is realistic. Because every year that you keep this off, I don't know what the five figure amount might be, but it's lost tax revenue. It's lost jobs and it's lost activity. Let's remember one thing, the original purchaser of that property completely made that into a shell. Took everything out of there that could have been worth money. So again, I hope whatever your committee does with the approval authority of the board of selectmen gets that property sold and finally utilized to the benefit of the town. And maybe it might be a forty B, maybe it might be something that will bring some life back into the downtown. But the tax revenue is important at this point for the years going forward and not lost by, owned by the town. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say just with really the three acquisitions, church, parking lot, the first parking lot, municipal parking lot and the gravel parking lot. I think it's probably closer to seven hundred and fifty K and certainly well over five hundred. Not counting structural analysis and some other dollars that we spent along the way. So it's a big.
Worth to you. I agree with you.
Yeah, so it's a big number.
Okay, all right. So that was the timing, that's the PNS. You wanted to talk about the parklet?
Yes.
And the facade work.
So one of the other projects that we've been working on, we need to see that also falls under the town. Is you're aware that town generously received last fall a donation, a piece of money in just outside town hall. Between the closed section of Warren Street, Kirk Street. It's about a third of eight. Our town planner, working with Senator Moore, got us a thirty-five thousand dollar grant for park design. Through one of the ARPA redo type. Since then, we went out and we solicited proposals for the design of that park. And we went with ESC. The board executed on that contract in July or the August. Since then, we had a kickoff meeting with the consulting team from ESC and the town manager, the D W Greg, myself and then the town. We talked a little bit about the vision, so they understood that, what we thought could be done with that park, brought them up to speed on. What the plan is for the design of the park here at town hall. One of the things that did come up, just to put on the radar for the future, is that this board temporarily closed Warren Street. So we cannot extend any form permanently to that section of Warren Street to be permanently. In progress, it's about some of the, the road there, which probably will be a town meeting. That will be for November, that could be. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Paul.
Why can't you do that for November?
Well, need to at least just do some background research, make sure that the, uh, the layout is actually the rather than he's meant. So town council would just want to be able to review that in advance. But realistically, uh, because we don't have funding in place, uh, by the time line all that up, do the plan. We have a better idea and especially for what would be.
I don't, sorry, I don't, I don't mean the development, I just mean the permanent closing of Warren Street.
Because, uh, let's say Warren was taken as a right of way, essentially an easement.
Yeah.
Um, it would then go back to the proper owners. Need to make sure that we own actually the land underneath, or in the layout, but make sure that it's basically a separate.
Got it.
That's just some historic investigation. We'll just have to verify.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask for Paul to say?
Yeah. Yeah. Paul, he's passing it to you if you have a.
Oh, okay. It's really hard hearing Dave, so apologize. I'm not a hundred percent sure of everything that Dave said, but, uh, it sounded like he encapsulated it nicely. We're, we're having a site meeting on Thursday with their design people and, uh, Mary from the conservation, uh, Mary, the conservation agent. So, uh, we can, they can, uh, they can discuss their, uh, the issues that they're in their realm. And that will help inform their design.
Now, one of the two things to talk about during that contract, one, there is to be at least one, uh, public like visionary meeting session. So anybody can come and see what some of the proposals are for the park. And we're talking about a passive park here. There's a community, asked of all quarters, ten years. So that is required as part of the contract and then also to outline potential funding sources. So that they will help point out, like, these are different grant programs, you can, the state or the federal government, you can get to do some work over there. So it's very early in the concept and it's just more to update the board that's moving on. We view it as part of a pedestrian-friendly passive area downtown. We think there's opportunity with the soul, the cafe, the people who maybe go outside and enjoy coffee. Area, create a nice place for employees to tell all, punch on a nice day. To put a kiosk type bulletin board for people that are doing a visit to Upton Center with, you know, standing areas to town hall, but on senior right. For the Pauline Dean radish houses and supporting different churches so people can understand the history. So, uh, our hope right now on the EDC is not to be in front of the sport in May, ask for four hundred thousand dollars to build a park there, but rather to say, we have a design, we're applying for these grants to help. Cause as I mentioned, a lot of money's already been invested in downtown. Okay, but it's a, it's a nice little story in the sense that the land is donated and the design is being, you know, paid for grants. So it's a lot of work that's being done downtown at no cost.
Questions, comments on this?
I think, yeah, just a quick one. Uh, I think Paul had mentioned in previous conversation that there was some discussion as to whether or not to try to do a small park uh, back on the new parcel or the parcel across the street at the old building that was torn down. Based on what we're talking about as far as the elevation challenges over there. Is it certain that makes the most sense to put it out back or upfront? Paul?
That's a, that's a question directed to me.
Yes.
I'm not sure. I've, I've had a conversation with this board about any other park. But to your point, that's why we engage professional design firm who does this kind of work. So we can know what's feasible and what's not.
All right. And then the last thing, if, uh, cause Paul's been running point on it, he can update you on the, the facade improvement program we have.
Facade improvement program, Paul.
Okay, I'm just getting peppered here. Okay, um, so, um, the facade improvement program, so I, I think Dave mentioned earlier, uh, that there was, we'd been working. This was something that grew out of the, uh, rapid recovery planning process. And, uh, it was one of the things I was identified with the stakeholder interviews. And then subsequently, uh, once that report, that plan was finalized, uh, through a couple of different sources, we've been able to create this program that we're about to kick off any moment now. It, different type of project, but similar to the Warren Street project, other than say my, my, you know, staff time so far. Uh, all the funding for this has been either through grants or through technical assistance that we're not, you know, paying out of pocket for at this point. So with the facade program, uh, we had two different pieces that helped create the program. One was, uh, we had a second round of redo funding. The redo funding paid for the, uh, the design for the parklet. And in partnership with the town of Mendon, uh, we applied for a second round of redo, excuse me. And, uh, because we had received funding for the parklet, we weren't able to be the lead on this request. But in part, partnering with Mendon, we were able to get that. And so, uh, we ultimately will be splitting, uh, sixty thousand dollars with the two towns. Uh, on that, that specifically for the facade, uh, implementation. That said, we didn't have a program in place. So we've been working with CMR PC, who through a technical assistance award, uh, helped both towns create, uh, a guideline, a set of guidelines and a process to initiate this program. So, uh, luckily those are parallel tracks, CMR PC worked with both towns on the effort. And so, uh, they just issued today, CMR PC just issued a press release about this, announcing the program. I have not seen any uptake on that yet. That said, uh, the predominant, you know, this isn't really, uh, this is going to be about sort of, you know, uh, good old fashioned shoe leather. We're going to be circling back with the businesses who had participated in the first round of the LRP survey. We'll start with them, see if there are any, uh, see if folks are still interested in that. They would get the priority because they were sort of the, uh, the impetus for the creation of the program. Uh, I think we saw a potential candidate tonight getting some new licensure in town. So I think it might be looked forward to talking to, uh, uh, the new folks at Rose Garden soon about whether they might want to participate. Uh, but after that initial round, then we'd be able to open up the program, uh, on a larger basis. So we could look at some of the businesses, uh, up and down one forty and in particular in West Upton. So, uh, working with CMR PC and working with the EDC, we'll be putting the information up on our website imminently. Getting that underway and using our developed, uh, business contact list to disseminate that information ahead of some more direct personal contact. So all that's going to be happening, uh, I would say collectively over the next few weeks to a month.
Awesome. That's great news.
And this is set up as a, uh, matching loan, ten-year loan, uh, that is forgivable after ten years. So if the business is still in place and what they paid to put in, uh, they use the money for, uh, it can be forgiven after the ten-year. So if you own a business, you put in two thousand dollars to paint the exterior, the town puts in the two thousand dollars for a total of four grand. If that business is still in business and it is still painted the same color and go vinyl side over or something like that. Uh, after the ten-year period, the loan. Vegas term, but it's a, a matching grant, matching loan. We'll see, uh, what the uptake is on that, if businesses are, are able to do that, one-on-one match. That ends up being struggled and maybe we can back advise it. That was the way that CMR was. And right now, if Paul's saying it's just for the up in center business district. We had to apply, issue to with our, 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 plus which was. But the framework we have in place obviously can be very easily expanded after the first round.
Yeah, we need to make sure ours was up there. There's, right, obviously there's some target opportunities there that were part of the reason we even started down this road. So we need to make sure.
And I'm hopeful if, if the program is successful, that we can in the future apply for additional state economic grants, um, to replenish that. So that we can continue to offer.
Great. Any other questions?
I have them.
Anything else?
I'm sure there's not something. So that is it for us.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, we have resignation from the Board of Assessors. So there's a letter in our packet from Kelly McKellaris. Our friend and former town clerk. I had to. To the town manager. So, yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to have the motion. Ah, got it right there.
There it is.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Kelly McElrath from the Board of Assessors with regrets.
I'd like to thank Kelly McElrath, putting all the years into the town and she will be sorely missed. My second motion.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action. Thank you. Right. And next up, we have the Board of Health conversation. So as, um, we've talked about previously, um, we had the, um, expected passing of Al Holman, which created a vacancy on the Board of Health. And so the process to, um, fill that vacancy through the remainder of the term, which expires in May of twenty twenty-three. Is the, uh, let's see. The board, did the Board of Health vote already to put names forward? Why don't you walk us through exactly what the process is and help us make sure we're, cause I know we've got the Board of Health folks here.
Yep.
Tonight as well.
So with, um, Mr. Holman's, uh, passing, uh, the Board of Health had submitted a, uh, or notifying them of the vacancy and requesting that the vacant, uh, position be posted so that we can arrange for a meeting between both boards to then fill that vacancy. Master in law basically dictates this process and the board has a whole body. Votes on that appointment. So three members of the board and the remaining members of the Board of Health, um, for a total of five would be voting on that and acting as one body.
Great. So we've had two, we have two applications, uh, one from, uh, what, one from Laura Hebb and one from Alan Rosesfield. Do, does the Board of Health need to open a meeting?
They are posted, but technically you don't because you're, you're coming together and it's not as one. Right.
Okay.
It's not a separate meeting as far as them doing their own business.
Okay. Great. So, um, we then just would discuss these two candidates. So, yeah, why don't the gentlemen come on up and we can talk through the process.
Awesome. The, uh, I have to say, I was supposed to retire. That week that my friend and fellow board member passed away. So I held back. And I plan on retiring very, very soon. But, um, what came up is also a very important thing for health is recycling. And I plan to change my retirement to next Friday. And I get to be known that I am leaving next Friday. My fellow board members have passed. I have to get off the board. I have been on town for so long, Mr. Schittman, that's. And, uh, now we can probably. And now we can probably agree on who will replace Al. But I would recommend that the other person that is, that has applied is me. After the advertisement, I know we have to advertise for seven days or. So after that, I would hope that whoever is left on the board, gotten appointed to the board shall be appointed. There's only two people. So there will be two vacancies.
Okay. Any questions, thoughts? Two candidates for one spot.
It's a shame if we're going to have another resignation and we have two candidates. It's the same, it's a shame that we're going to have to say no to somebody. But I guess I would just quickly ask the candidates to just quickly tell us your interest in the seat. And then I guess we can take a vote.
Go ahead, Ms. Hebb. Why don't you go first, please?
Um, so truth, I, I did watch the selectmen's meeting and it was my understanding that Mr. DeJardins was going to retire. When I heard of the untimely passing of Mr. Holman, I knew Mr. Briggs was the sole person left on the Board of Health and aware that September through May is Parkinson's cold test. I know the recycle's been an issue. And I thought, it's not fair. I figured the board needed somebody to step forward and assist Mr. Briggs with his duties. We have amazing employees at the Board of Health, but there's a board for the reasons. So I threw my name in before it was even advertised. I filled out an application and I sent my name in. You need a warm body. I'm here. I'm a realtor. I'm familiar with Title V and familiar with wells. You know, I understand there's animal control. There's restaurants, there's depot, there's car tests, there's quite a bit in trash, quite a bit discovered. Also, as a realtor, I'm also available at odd times during the day. I know in the past, we had an issue with a house that was condemned with some cats and they needed immediate meetings to be held and those issues to be addressed. I have a very flexible schedule. I like to say as a realtor, I'm either going zero or a thousand and there is no in between. So what I have, I do have flexibility and I am not far. I live right on Road Street down the street. So that's my pitch. I'd be willing to take either. I understand it has to be advertised again. I know Mr. Holman has closer to two, I think Mr. DeJardins has about a year left. So if I'm not appointed tonight, it would definitely be my name and my application in. Thank you.
So there's nothing that I would, first of all, I wouldn't say, but that I could say negative against Laura. I met Laura several months ago. I'm a big fan of hers. And honestly, I voted for her. So why do I want this position? Because I want to give back to the town. I hope that many of you know that in the past, like in the two terms, many of the issues that you're facing now, I was involved in the passage of those. As a county farm member, I've been appointed by the Board of Selectmen over the past fifteen years or so to approximately five or six committees. Everything from building committees to whether or not the educational system should move itself for Mendon, whether we should have a strong chief or the Board of Engineers in the Fight Department. This is my community, although I guess I'm still a newbie because I wasn't born here. But reality is since nineteen eighty-seven, my wife and I, and our two children call this our home. And I remember talking with Al about that I was actually thinking of running. Because I wanted to be involved respectfully to you, the Board of Selectmen. I think the Board of Health is one of the most important now, respectfully, because we have a town manager. So I don't think that being a Board of Selectmen is similar to what it was when I served on. I just want to give back to the town. My colleague, the person, 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 say next to me, I think the world of her. I don't think you can go wrong if you turn to her. But I hope you consider my, my application. I'd love to serve.
And can we clarify that this is the term that expires in May of twenty twenty-three?
Well, so, um, per the control sheet, this appointment only goes until May twenty twenty-three. Then they will have to seek election to fill the remainder of Al's term, which would be up for reelection in twenty twenty-four.
Right. So whichever, whatever, they'll be, whoever we appoint tonight and once Mr. DeJardin retires, we're going to appoint that, that seat will also be May of twenty twenty-three. We'll have to be in election for the two different terms at the same time. So I just want to make sure Laura. Yeah. All right. Okay. So recommendations, thoughts, question?
I'd like to make a motion for Alan Rosenfeld to replace Al. The reason that I chose Al is with the problems in Board of Health right now, with recycling and so forth, we need somebody that can hit the ground running. And I've always thought of the town first and I'm very sorry for Alan because he's trying not to work like Al. And this is coming up as manager of, there is, there are problems with recycling.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
So why don't we take a vote? I think we can go around and do a roll call vote.
Well, I think we have other motions, right?
You have other motion and.
If there's any other motions.
Technically, you're supposed to vote on the motion at hand before you open it up to more than one motion.
Right. That was how, when there was an election, you put forward as many candidates and then you took your vote. That's how it's done in the past, but.
Whatever you want to do. I think it, I think it's, I think we should have a conversation. And then when we decide whether there's a grief, so do you want to, you want to nominate someone else or you want to make a motion for Laura?
I would.
There's people sitting here, so it's either Alan or Laura. So if it's not Alan, then you're going Laura.
I would make a motion. To the board for the remainder of the term. If there's a second.
Okay.
We have a second if there's not a second.
Two Allens, one Laura.
I second.
You're seconding Laura.
If you want the chairman.
This is the joy of being, see, this is why I make seven fifty and not five hundred.
I rolled. I rolled a big one.
It's, it's so, for me, right, I can only speak for myself. You know, unless other people, see, the, the thing that I think we should be clear about is that there were other applicants that have withdrawn their application. So now we've got two people that are here. And that's great. Obviously, you would both do a phenomenal job, right? Laura, right, you're trying to get involved. Do you want to help out? Do you want to do more? This is a great way to do that, get you more involved, help you see and learn about sort of what goes on with this kind of volunteering. And it's a great opportunity and obviously we need more help. Alan, you've been helping for a very long time. Since you moved here, there's been tremendous number of things that you've done, roles that you've played, impacts that you've had on the town. You know, so there's, there's no doubt that you both represent sort of very different things in the community in terms of this particular, this particular opportunity. I expect that over the next week or two, we'll, or I guess it'll be seven days and the next week after that, we'll be filling the other seat. So I think, you know, given that my, my priority right now would be to bring in new blood. Right? So we have Alan serving in a lot of roles and a lot of different functions in the past. And I think he'll be here in a week and a half or two weeks as, as you will be. But it would be a privilege to support Laura at this time. Okay. So do you want to make a motion? Did you already second the motion?
I seconded the motion.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, do we do a, if that's what I can't remember is the next roll call vote or do we just do a voice vote?
It's two motions on the floor.
Right. So we have to disposition the first motion, which would be, I'm a nay, I'm assuming you're both nays on that, on the nomination for Alan. And then there,
Both nays.
Both nays for Laura. We'll support Laura. Laura gets the nomination until May of twenty twenty-three. Go from there.
See, and that's the problem with having one board member shot. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Do we have to?
Do you have what you need?
Yes.
We don't have to do, oh, they said nays.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got both motions, we've got both votes. We've got the seat filled and we'll be back again in a week. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have the, thank you very much. Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Our pleasure. A street sign request.
So this is just a little further back in June. The board had considered a request, which was supported by police and DPW for blind drive. And that was at, I believe it was sixteen Christian. This is just a little bit for that, as you're coming down Christian Hill at thirty-nine. Now, the argument here is that, again, this, and this is just a continuation, just the design of Christian Hill, that the person had indicated that mailbox had been hit twice, very nervous from approaching their driver from either direction, hence requesting the sign. The police did review it and did recommend approval, although there's an asterisk that wants to review with DPW director. DPW director is currently on vacation, so we can't close that, that. So, you know, recommendation would be as identified in the warrant. I mean, in the motion, directed as, installed as directed by DPW. So that gives you the chance for the police and DPW director to identify proper location and make sure that this is coordinated with the other sign that was.
Okay.
I was just going to ask Dennis, I realized that he's on vacation, but it just, there's two different choices of signs that the request is, blind drive or dangerous curve. So I was just going to ask Dennis what his recommendation was on that. We could certainly defer, have a problem with the sign. We could allow Dennis to make the decision.
And if, if the board wants to leave, it could DPW director or once he's back, we can also reconsider this at the, the September twentieth.
I mean, if you want to just approve it as a request. Right. Put it in a blind drive or dangerous curve signage at the W director's discretion.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, Christian Hill's pretty windy and.
You could probably put both of those signs there, alternating every two hundred and fifty feet. Yeah.
Is the applicant here by any chance?
Yep.
If you're it.
Please.
I move that the select board vote to approve the request for a blind drive or dangerous curve sign to be installed near thirty-nine Christian Hill Road and that it be installed as directed by the DPW director.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, unanimous action. One forty-nine Main Street Regulatory and Use Agreement for the Local Initiative Programs.
Okay, go up here.
Please, anywhere that's comfortable. Thanks for your patience.
Got here a little earlier than you thought, right?
No, no, I want to be different. This is important. My name's Ed Marshaw. I'm chapter forty, the advisor to Kevin Holberst. We met with you virtually on March first to get your, to request your approval, a LIP local initiative program application to the D H C D. You approved that unanimously and we submitted to the D H C D. And you're aware, you should have received a copy of the LIP approval from the D H C D on August sixteenth. The reason we did that, as we explained to you previously, is to increase the flexibility in terms of permanent financing. Under one of the programs, it was only for LIP funding. So we, we want to proceed with that, but because the subsidizing agency is being changed from mass housing to D H C D, we need a new regulatory agreement. The regulatory agreement is, is standard among all of the agencies in Massachusetts. And if you've had a chance to review it or even compare it or see that, the only thing we get to do as developer, Kevin gets to do is to insert the name of the project, the unit mix, and any other particular detail. The agencies don't like to change, don't like to make modifications to the regulatory agreement. We have a copy of the three originals, D H C D. The, the process would be if you approve this and sign it. And Debbie Mastian, yesterday night, I'm being optimistic here to do sign, to notarize the signature. I need to get it right two years. Yeah, they told us to get it. That should get the extra proof.
Exactly.
So they, they won't sign it until Kevin signed it and until the town has signed it. That's the regulatory and use agreement. We'd be happy to answer any question. I think it's more of a formality. Before we came to you, we had to go to the board, the zoning board of appeals. And they approved this, this change in subsidizing agencies as a substantial respect. So that all works and done. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You know, I probably asked you this the last time you presented to the board. And now understanding, of course, that it's a new LIP agreement. So some, some of the numbers or the financing mechanism may have changed. Could you just briefly tell me what changed from March till today?
The.
Was it like length of time or strictly the whoever's loaning the money?
It, it was just in terms of, of course, we went through a period where rates so spiked up. So we didn't really push this entirely because there's some uncertainty in terms of what we do. In terms of the project itself, the rents are still governed by the chapter forty B guidelines that at least twenty-five percent of the units have to be affordable to households at eighty percent of area median income. And that rent has to include all utilities or utility allowance. Those rents are reviewed by the subsidizing agency and governed by the subsidizing agency. All of the units, because at least twenty-five percent of units are affordable units will count towards your subsidized housing. So really, there's no significant changes in terms of that.
Yeah. And this doesn't have any impact on the existing residents?
No.
There in terms of, these different agencies don't have different sort of formulas or approaches to calculate what they're.
In fact, D H C D does.
Yeah.
But I knew that would be a concern. The last thing we wanted to do is change the methodology. So one change I did get in the regulatory agreement is to have D H C D agree to use the same definition of household that mass housing used.
Okay.
For some reason, D H C D is a bit of a bather in terms of how it defines household size. Its formula is number of bedrooms plus one. So for a one bedroom unit, the rent would have been higher. For a two bedroom unit, the same because two plus one is the same as two times one and a half. two plus one is the same as two times one and a half. The, the mass housing methodology, the methodology used for loan home tax credits, which is probably the most significant affordable housing program, is number of bedrooms times one and a half. And for a three bedroom unit, the rent under the D H C D would have to be lower because it would be three plus one versus three times one and a half. So the rents are the same. We didn't, we didn't want to be in a position to change.
Change though.
That's the definition of you.
Right.
D H C D uses, by the way, they use that only on 40Bs. The tax credit program is a federal program and they have to go by the federal rules, which is number of bedrooms times one and a half.
That's not in the question. Thank you.
I have nothing else.
I have nothing?
It's pretty straightforward.
Good stuff. All right. We have motion?
I'm meeting Steve.
I counted. If you'd like to, you can.
Go ahead.
It's a long motion, thanks.
Getting longer.
I move that the board vote to approve entering into that regulatory and use agreement under the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D, Local Initiative Program, LIP for the 40B development known as 149 Main and located at 149 Main Street in Upton, Mass. And authorize the chairman to execute such regulatory agreement on behalf of the town and in the pre-requisite number of duplicate originals as required by D H C D. And authorize the chairman to submit a confirmatory letter to D H C D of such vote and authorization, together with a certified copy of the vote as prepared by the clerk. And to authorize the chair of the Upton Board of Selection to execute the D H C D approved form of the local spring regulatory agreement, subject to review and modification as needed by town council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous action. Compute.
Thank you very much, if you're willing.
I got my pen. Yeah.
Bye.
Hi, it doesn't matter. We'll just try to do this as quickly as and efficiently as possible.
Well, I have one more.
Those two things can't happen, can they? For Kansas.
Yes.
Here too?
I know, that's where I have to do.
All right.
Small.
Over the weekend?
Pretty cool, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Something.
All right.
Not believable.
If you have it.
Second, I'm happy to name a block.
All right.
All very patient.
Yeah, 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 maybe something. Yep. All right, we will, she doesn't need our second.
This.
Go ahead.
Please, the string agreement is a multiple agreement if or when the regulatory agreement expires. It, it only takes effect and it's a protection to the past. I spoke with the town manager and he wanted, and I agreed to have town council review it. I sent Kevin, I volunteered Kevin, who pays for whatever, out of pocket, cost around that. And I hope we get, if D H C D has to review it too. So I'm hoping.
Just goes one way.
Get that to you next week. Tell later the next week. If there's anything else you guys want to give review, just throw it in.
Get it all, this is, this is catch all bucket. Count.
This is the most.
And I like it. You're a lefty.
Formal. Are you lefty too? Yeah, that's good. So I will get along. All right.
Thank you.
How you know you like it?
That's right.
Thank you for the schedule.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck. All right. Warren articles, draft Warren articles. What do we got?
So I just had this that I was looking through my emails. I intended to send this off to the board to give you a heads up and because I got sidelined with some other things. I don't know if it actually, if I actually hit send, but I wanted to just show you this. So one of the things that in thinking about the vacancy for the Board of Assessors and talking with the Board of Assessors on filling that position, when Kelly was still on the board and then Bill Taylor also being on the board and now is the last remaining member, we had talked about the possibility of changing the Board of Assessors so that one of the two members, sorry, one of the three members could actually be appointed and be the principal assessor. In a lot of towns, principal assessor actually sits on the Board of Assessors. Here, if, if the assessor was town resident, they could actually be on the board, but sometimes the principal assessor is not on, is not a resident of the town and therefore, you know, is unable to be elected, but is appointed to serve on the Board of Assessors. So worked with town council to sort of take the recommendation that was coming out of, from Kelly and Bill to sort of formulate as an article for special legislation. Currently, there's special legislation that has the staff of the assessor's office report to the town manager and the work is coordinated with the elected board members. So this sort of dovetails in with that, two of the members would still be elected and just that one seat would be appointed. So wanted to get your, your thoughts. Kelly had said if it was supported that she'd even speak at special town meeting in support of this. Bill supports this as well. I can always submit it to the warrant on Friday and then when we review articles, if there's articles, we want to just go forward with. We can pull it if you want to have more time to think about it. That's why I gave a hard copy. You know, want to at least get the, the thoughts wasn't, didn't think that, especially because we're dealing with two vacancies right now with the board. Didn't really think making any sort of change to whether they're elected or appointed would fly by town meeting, but this sort of seemed like a happy medium because the, in the past, the Board of Assessors was much more involved, and this is just throughout Massachusetts. Was much more involved doing inspections, going out, making decisions. Now you really, the Board of Assessors really rely on, on town staff in order to do a lot of that work and to be licensed and get the necessary certificates. So that's why in a good number of towns, the principal assessor will actually serve on the Board of Assessors because they're the ones that, that are getting the certifications and doing the training and all those things. So put before the board, see if it's worth considering. If you want to take some time again, it's always something that can be pulled off. You know, if said, you know, maybe not at this time, doesn't really, doesn't really suit the needs of the town.
I mean, I'd like some time to digest. I think my gut feeling is, I, I look at the Board of Assessors right now, their function really is looking at public basement questions and real estate questions. So I'm kind of thinking that I hate to take away, you know, an elected position and especially if it's somebody that doesn't live in town. So I, I'm not sure. I, I would suspect that right now, or just say four or five months ago, the board would meet and the caller, the principal assessor would be at the meeting, right? They would attend the meeting anyways?
Correct. That position as assistant assessor was essentially if you, was sort of below the, the board as far as really implementing the recommendations policies and it was more of a supportive function. You see an assistant assessor when many often in other towns that have a principal assessor and then the assistant assessor is, is more of a supporting role. Here, the assistant assessor had been set up to support the elected board. But as, and, and you all know the history more than, than I do, as members came on and off and then there was the, the change in stifens, I think that then made it more challenging to have people that really wanted to invest in trying to do the certifications, the trainings and all those things to, to be as active and that Tracy found herself as really being the, the lead as far as what directing the, the, the policy direction for the board. Because she's the one that's going to all the, the train, she's the one that's, that's certified and that then they're providing more of a, a supporting, supporting role. So I, again, it's, it's sort of thrown out there. We're trying to address, you know, here we have two vacancies. There are going to be elected positions that will be up in May. We're not getting the interest that we're getting from the, say, the Board of Health. And it's then the same thing like recreation and cemetery, those are also elected and we're getting no applications. So it was sort of trying to think, okay, can we thread the needle a little bit? If we get someone that becomes the principal assessor and lives in town, then it's sort of easy. But that could come in and out and graft and the previous assessor, when I was there, lived in town, then took another job, then the principal assessor lived in Sutton, but then stayed on the board. So you know, there, there are examples around, but really it comes down to what is really the fit for, for Upton and you know, I love your feedback as far as taking a look, thinking about it. And, you know, it's, if it's just not the right time, it's not the right time.
I think there's a lot of interest, not that they don't like the job as such, but it takes a lot of time because they all have to go to school and pass the courses.
Yeah.
And if they don't do it in a year, they can.
Right.
So, I mean, the interest isn't there, especially with the stipends and all that stuff. You have to take time off work to go to these classes and.
I didn't realize it was certification process, as you mentioned.
All have to be certified.
Any of the people that are applauding or any of the other positions, want to be on?
We should probably let it with.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we'll think about it.
There's a link walkout screen there. Luckily, no one else can see it except for us.
Oh, okay.
Do you have thoughts, questions, comments?
I am interested.
You're interested in doing, okay, so probably, so do we want to then, do we need to decide now to put it on as a placeholder?
If the three of you had said like, this is never going to fly, just like, I just wouldn't even put it on.
Yeah, I think it's okay to put it on there and then that.
All we'd be doing is sitting it out.
Pull it off.
Exactly.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm, I want to just understand the details of it a little bit more because like my, my gut sense, I think, is very much with Steve's. I never am a fan of moving responsibility for putting people into public positions from elected to appointed unless there's some compelling reason to do so. And I just want to make sure, I know you know it, but I just need to spend some time sort of internalizing what that.
Yeah, and I mean also is to make sure that it's. You know, and also just identifying, you know, what the certification requirements are for the Board of Assessors so that, you know, if that helps understanding, you know, like what then the requirements are. You know, can you?
Yeah, it, it's almost like how our board would interact with Joe. You know, almost looked at as the assessors in that way. Then you would look at your, you know, as equals. So say however, we're, you know, elected members of the community, you know, whereas Joe was the professional, but he still answers to us. So you, you'd like to see that type of a mesh between elected and full-time staff.
And that's where for the, for the board, the changes that were done to the Town Managers Act brought the assessing staff to report to the town manager. You know, but it's always in coordination with the board.
And this basically allows us to appoint our principal assessor, assessor to the Board of Assessors.
Correct.
Instead of running the scenario where you've got a principal assessor that's not on the Board of Assessors and you've got to now find three other people that are interested in being.
All to be certified and they need to maintain certification, you know, educational.
Means that we have to find three people to do that. We can find two people because we'll always add one in the whole assessor. Simple assessor.
So we have on the board right now is Bill, right?
Bill.
And there's nobody in the office.
No.
Okay.
You wonder if this is a sign moving forward that that, those particular seats that especially where they require some time away from town to get those certifications, is that a particular seat that perhaps that stipend should be increased? You know, instead of, again, the five and the 750, maybe if you're, we're asking people to make that type of a commitment to the town.
Yeah, you would make it more attractive to incent them to do it.
Yes, yeah, a little incentive this.
Yeah.
Okay, at the last meeting, I had sort of done a, I did a rundown of article lists, which included funding for police fire vehicles, construction for Grove Street Bridge, zoning definition, changing the definition of frontage. The, the whole Crockett Road easement, having that as, as an article. Town Council's working with Dennis on an article for allowing for a waiver process for connection fees for water and sewer. That's a whole issue that is, is, has geared up because of landing in that Mass Works grant and what exactly, you know, the butters, you know, whether they'd be responsible for connecting. So adding in a sort of a waiver provision so that you know, the board would be able to not require connection fees if we're utilizing state funds for, for a grant versus the town itself doing the work. And then also the other thing is that at, at annual town meeting, we had allocated an additional like 45,000 for the purchase of a van. Not only are vans hard to get right now, but also the, the price just like gone up. So we're looking at a delta of about 300. So, and that's for a van that we could potentially get in a couple, couple of months. So looking for funding to get an additional essentially 35 just to hedge our bets that things don't go any more. But otherwise, we're running the, the risk that the van just will not be operational.
Does the van price stay at now?
So we have, there was like 42 from previous grant, there was 45 and right now the, the estimate that came in was 119. So, and it's not a unforeseen emergency expense. So really, and that would, that would use up about 75% of our reserve.
What now? What if they put a purchase order in to go forward with the van? Does the price stay the same?
That's, the question is that I'd have to have any sign on it if we don't have appropriation.
No, I mean, I know that, but I mean, after, it's not until November, right?
Yeah. Yeah, like a 30-day type.
Yeah.
You know, quote, the, the quote is basically valid until the end of September. That's where it could go up, but also we're not guaranteed the van. So.
Probably take some of this line. Are there other articles that we need to?
No, that's other, they're basically outside of awaiting one from mosquito.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten the language on that yet.
I don't, I don't think there's going to be one.
Okay.
So that will be off.
So we're, we're basically just looking at 12, 13 articles.
Mosquito control board. I exercised my persuasive abilities on that one.
Okay, that was one of the, I was sort of wondering if anyone was.
All good.
Oh, that's it.
All right. Alright. Got to try to save money, Steve, I just wanted money.
I like it, thank you.
I know, I knew you'd like that, want to get credit for that.
You make sure you bring that to my attention.
Exactly, exactly, that's supposed to having it coming and saying, no, I wanted to say, no, it's not even, no, it just didn't make sense. Okay, excellent, 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 alright. Anything else on that, if not, we will go to the minutes. We've got the 12th and the 26th.
Pass.
Pass over these, okay. And then we will go to executive session. Do we read all the details of that, typically these are very vague and it's very specific, so we'll read this the way it is written?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
See Steve backing up on that one?
Sounds like a roll call vote coming.
Alright, you got this one, Maureen?
I got it. I move that the board of selectmen vote to enter into executive session, section one pursuant to. Mass General Law, Chapter 214, Section 1B and Mass General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 220, 26C. To discuss financial assistance to residents in need. And two pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the governmental body. Regarding 104 Westboro Road, Upton Board of Health, Ball versus Christina. Central Housing Court, Court Docket Number 1885CV000436 and not to reconvene an open session.
I would second the motion, Stephen Matelli, not.
Maureen Duwan Ali.
Brett Simon-Si, unanimous action. Thanks, folks.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone.